Call me to order, stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, please call your secretary. And number two, motion, I'll accept the motion to recess into executive session for the...
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a question, would you please amend the agenda to go to executive session at the end, please?
I understand we have a lot of people who make that on the session, but it's not there to the reference of this. Mr. Mayor.
Or should I have to have a motion? Then the rules. Well, that has to be taken care of first.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to go into executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay, the motion should be to suspend the rules to change the agenda. And then after that's been done, then you can make a motion to move the executive session down to wherever you want to move it to.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda.
You have to suspend the rule.
Mr. Mayor, we've always done this in one motion, but would you like to take the motion?
You have to, you have, trustee, I'm trying to tell you how to do it the right way. No, it's not, that's the right way. Because the agenda is, it's just, it's set, each day in the meeting, when you have to suspend the rule to amend the agenda, that's the first thing you have to do, and get a second, and then bulldog it. Then someone can come and say, I'd like to move the executive session to the end of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the agenda, to, I'm sorry, suspend the rules to amend the agenda, that is exactly what you said. I'd like to make that motion.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Bell, motion to amend, suspend the rules for the purpose of amend the agenda. There is a motion of any question. Motion carrying, I'll entertain a motion to where you would like to have these, this item number two inserted into the agenda.
Are you asking for the motion?
I'm asking for the motion to where it would like to be inserted, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the executive session to the end of the agenda.
So you wanted item number E and eleven, on the, on the, uh, number eleven? I'm sorry, item number D.
Item number D, I'm determined.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Bell, to move item number 2A to 11D. Any questions?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carrying, item number three, approve, I'm sorry, item number four, approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the proceedings of the regular board meeting of July 23rd, 2019.
So move that motion with corrections. So move with corrections.
Second.
Could you state the question so that we, for the record? Just questions, just...
No, with corrections.
I'm saying, uh, there's, could you state the correction? Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Todd, any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Motion carrying, I'll entertain a motion to approve the general proceedings for the special meeting dated July 31st, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Juzinski, any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion carrying, item number C, motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proceeding, the general proceedings for the special meeting for August 7th, 2019.
So move with corrections, sir.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Juzinski, any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Motion carrying, I'll entertain a motion to approve the general proceedings for the regular board meeting for August 13th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Bell, any question? Madam clerk?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carrying, I'll entertain a motion for the general proceedings for the committee meetings of August 20th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Juzinski, any question?
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Motion is carrying. Finally, I'll, uh, accept the motion to approve the, uh, general proceeds for the special board meeting of September 26th, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Juzinski, any question?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion carrying, item number five, public comments, all comments and questions are directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of solvency. Speakers allow one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. Counter replies or rebuffs. I'll hear all comments and I'll answer at the end. Please state your name when you come up.
Pat Couch, I submitted a FOIA on October the 17th for the transcript of the October 4th hearing for the mayor's restraining order. I hope I don't have to wait the full five days or with another five-day extension to receive an email, which I had asked for it to be sent as an email, of a document that is readily available to the FOIA clerk. After such a long process, where many people have been told that the trustees are holding up the budget, we finally have a budget. At least we did until the mayor vetoed it. It is now clear who is actually responsible for holding up our budget. Let's get it passed.
William. So I don't want anybody to get the idea that I was being sarcastic when I told you about the meeting. The reason for it was because, you know, I don't know much about it, but I like to go over it, try to get out of the long time. Now, I don't know, but we get something that we can ask them, of course. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is that I didn't want you to get the idea that I was trying to be sarcastic when I said what I said. My idea was that we had come to the meeting to hear what the meeting is about. I know you have problems, you have to go back there, but we do not, I don't know about you, but I don't feel like I should sit here until you go back there and come back. I would like to sit out here. The second thing is this, I have a book back there called Robert Rules of Law Order. And what it says to me that any person asks the question twice, the third time that question, the same question by that person is asked, they do not have the answer. What it should do then is tell the clerk to call the rolls. If the clerk does not call the rolls, one of the trustees was called. She must write that down in her paperwork, saying that this motion was done at a certain time, and that's why we did this. The second thing is this, a lot of times we look at people and say, well, you know, they're doing this to the mayor, they're doing this to the trustee. We, we'd like you guys to get the business at hand, stop kicking around money. If you got something to do, the budget or whatever you got to pass, sit down and pass it. No need to argue about it going on like that. I would love to see this. Start the meeting at seven o'clock. Okay, one more minute, half, meeting at seven o'clock and get us out of here at eight-thirty. Try that.
Heidi Parker. I wanted to let the trustees know and the mayor that I object to the liquor policy. Any word? I object to the liquor policy for Sunday morning. Also, I wanted to mention that the daycare in Surfer Plaza has been there for many years. However, the liquor licenses were just issued a little while ago for two gaming establishments and a bank. So, just wanted to correct that. The new policy of responding to public comments at the end causes some concern. Some concerns go unanswered, some are somehow responded to in a different view. In no way did I try to limit someone's freedom of speech by asking that the mayor write a letter to Facebook to ask that the Sock Village Illinois page name be changed and the logo be removed. That's however what the mayor said. Unless other mayors benefit political from a page that appears official, but is not, they would demand that Facebook change that name and remove that logo. I also hope that you will return to responding to the comments as they are made, and that you will write that letter.
I'm sorry, Ms. Powell, I mean, uh, Ms. Parker, this lady. Can you feel like you repeat what you just said, the last piece? I'm sorry, I didn't... Can you repeat the last thing that you said?
I would want to ask the mayor that he return the public comments to answering after each comment, and also that he write that letter to Facebook, and in the name of that page change. It could become so, and see.
Judy Cast here. I'm going to agree with Ms. Parker. I did come up here tonight to say that your comments, week after week after week, about, uh, social media don't fit the program. I, nobody expects you to tell an adult what they can and cannot say in social media. What we're telling you is that the Sock Village page and the Sock Village logo is Sock Villages. It doesn't belong to anybody else. But if you don't see fit to step in and rectify that error, then there's no reason that all of us can't use the Sock Village page as our own. Secondly, I would like to know why. After all these years, I've been here for over 50 years, never have I seen anybody run for office, get a seat, and then be confined to what they can do. They have committees, and yet they're nothing more than a liaison to the residents. That isn't what we voted them in place for. I want to know how many empty houses are in the village right now in comparison to last year and the year before. But I can't find that out because our housing person isn't given permission to have those numbers. People think things like that are funny. Wait, people, you ain't seen nothing yet.
Daniel Ward, trustee mayor. Just to touch back on what the, uh, you said before, this young lady, uh, she's, uh, she checked about the, uh, the liquor stores next to the daycare centers. There is some progress. And I, and I appreciate you, mayor, for going back to check into that. Secondly, uh, we having a problem with political bridge. We pointing a finger at the wrong agenda. We expecting the mayor to do things that we can also do as well. And I just want to say, there is some progress. It's too much emotion, there is no political literacy, and it's a rat race. We have to come together as a people versus point fingers. If we can do something about it, it can be probable, but you put somebody in the seat and you're expecting them to do a job that's really out of his sole power. It's his job to look into it, not to change it. And it's up to us to change it, and the trustees as well, to come together as a people, and we can get some change. That's all, thank you.
My name is Anona Ayers, and I'm new in Carlisle State. I'm addressing my question to this administration.
Not to talk up.
It was my understanding from the lawyer representing the truck repair shop that he wanted input from the residents of Carlisle State before any monies were spent on this project. The lawyer also stated this was the only site available. The village has an industrial park. Why have they not been offered to purchase the site there rather than try to rezone R1 residential to C3 commercial? My neighbor informed me that someone is placing flags in various sections within the 12-acre proposed site. Is the mayor, the trustee, and the zoning board aware of this? We, the residents, were kept in the dark about the June 25th meeting, and kept in the dark for the two application fees to change the zoning. It appears as though someone is surveying the area. I ask you, are we once again being kept in the dark? This administration needs to find out what is going on. I have in my possession petitions signed by the, by the Carlisle State residents, not wanting this. It might be a small community, where we also have rights under the annexation agreement between Carlisle State and the village. Thank you.
Good evening, Arnold Colvin, Mr. Mayor, trustees. First of all, my subject matter is about the streetlights in the village. I want to start by first thanking public works for replacing the one light bulb on the corner of Peterson and 217 Place. And my question is, how long will it be before the following lights are replaced? Uh, two lights on the, on the street, on Jeffrey Avenue, right at the corner of Carroll Lane. And, um, at the corner of 217 Place and Jeffrey, that lamp is, that post, the lamppost is knocked down, it's not there anymore. But that's an intersection, and I think that's a critical place, that it needs to, that poles to be put back up and the lights to be on. So that, you know, obviously the cars and pedestrians can, you know, safely cross. And that concludes my request.
My name is Daniel Stevens. Uh, Mr. Mayor, trustees, early in the year, I submitted two proposals for a business and leadership program of youth in town. Uh, with no response to either one, and I know at that time, the election was happening. Everybody said, wait till after the election. Is that the election, after the election? I haven't submitted that proposal due to a surgery I had. I'd like to put another proposal, if you don't have the old ones together. That way, at the oncoming winter, it helps me get something for our youth to do, other than hang out in the snow. Thank you.
The comments that were addressed, uh, there were comments, and I appreciate the comments. I'm sure that, um, maybe frustration, I don't know why it would be frustration that you said it not be answered, but going back to the old way of addressing each comment after it's done, after it's been taken care of, a back-and-forth thing, and so I didn't think we should even be trying to go back and forth. Because if I answer the question, then there was another question behind that question, and another question. After that, then we kept going back and forth, so, um, that's why it was just answered at the end. Um, as far as logo being removed from, um, so-called, I guess you would say it's the village face, it's not the village Facebook page. So if someone wants to, um, use the Sock Village logo, all I can do is report that it has been done. So I don't know why it seems, say that I haven't done anything, but then again, that's misinformation. As far as getting information for the houses, uh, how many houses are, um, in disarray or in repair, or how many house we have. Uh, we do have a person that's, that's done, that's doing that, we have a trustee that's taking care of that. So if she's telling me she's not getting the information, that's a different thing, but I'm sure that if she come in and get the information that she needs to get the report that she needs to put out there. Um, the liquor license, or the liquor establishment that are next to the daycares, most of those, and I think all of them except for one, is the liquor establishment that sell liquor there before the daycares. The truck repair, and I said before, that's going to have to go in the business for the zoning board, they're going to have to meet potential for whatever that you have, we walk into that meeting, because that's when the zoning board will be there. People are trying to bring in the businesses that'll be there and the residents. There, there'll be time for you to give your comments and the reasons why you don't want it at that particular area. And those things, they'll bring you back to board. The zoning committee will bring you back to board, and it'll be basically their recommendation for that for, uh, stuff. So, uh, they're putting flags out, if someone does own that land, and contrary to what you may think, that somebody got paid. I don't, I don't know where that came from, but then again, we don't know where a lot of the stuff comes from, but they're surveying for reasons, oh, their land, they can survey, they can put anything in there. So they could be surveying for a lot of different reasons, be it electrical, could be for, I mean, it could be for a lot of different things. See if they have that, if they have the capability of that land. But there is nothing that's said, written, and I said before, there's nothing that's moving forward as far as the village on that particular parcel and right there off the earth. They are looking to have a commercial license, to have it changed from R1 to a C2. That's all they're doing, is asking to have it done, but ask a group of channels, which means they have to go to the zoning board. They have to find out what it is they're going to do, and all the other requirements that are going to take care of that. So there's nothing that the village has moved forward on, nothing that the village has voted on. They're not trying to hide this, there's nothing to hide. It hasn't happened to them. Um, streetlights, I'm sure Mr. Weller's here, he's, uh, and, uh, I'm pretty sure he can, he'll probably address that on his, uh, his, uh, comments in this report. Um, Mr., the gentleman tried to propose for a new program, soon as all this is done, to take care of. Uh, I think there's money in there for that, and, uh, we have to go through the proper channels. Everything that has to be done to get a program off the ground, to, uh, spearhead it. And as you already know, there are certain things that have to take care, have to take place before we can do a lot of that, so. But it's not, it's not a matter of putting you involved, we're not putting you involved, we just have to make sure other things are taken care of before we move forward with that, so, yes. And I still, uh, looking forward to seeing what you can find out exactly with the, uh, programs and how we can go about, uh, implementing the program to get it started. So there's nothing that we're trying to, uh, sidestep, believe me. The youth, the youth need as much help as we can possibly give them. Um, that's all, comments. And like I said, there were, uh, comments, I don't, um, want to use the word back and forth with this comment. And then, uh, also, as far as FOIA's, FOIA's is going to be handled a little differently, because we don't have a FOIA per se clerk anymore, so, uh, FOIA's is going to be handled, we have to drop orders around there, and, uh, we have to go there. There is no, um, the line for your clerk to sit in the FOIA right there. That being said, uh, going to reports of officers. Mayor's report, um, I've been looking at the, uh, hours of operation to extend, but they, the company's business wanted to, uh, get licensed so they can start serving out all that, and on Sunday at eight o'clock, and right now, it seems like there's a lot of... And on Sunday at eight o'clock, and right now it seems like there's a lot of back and forth, so I'm kind of, I'm going to table that. And, you know, hopefully, we'll see what happens, but it's something that the business brought to my attention. And I had to bring it to board to find out if they would like to, and right now it doesn't seem conducive to us, so. Right now, hours will stay the same on Sundays, and that's what, that's what they wanted to have, to change those hours on Sunday. So right now, we're just putting others, table that for now. The next item. Today, in the, in the fourth, at the end, going to be, fourth end, going to be a motion to abolish the position for economic development. I just want to make a comment and a factual statement. In March of this year, two thousand nineteen, we were very fortunate to be chosen as one of the candidates. Be given the opportunity to participate in C map's pilot program. That program planner, our village planner, was none other than Miss Maggie Jarrett, who's a science for Saw Village president. As a part-time dedicated source where the village is working very closely with the community and they cannot be developed into revenue. Having a dedicated village resources was part of reaching the C map show for Saw Village. Now, by not having a dedicated staff member, it could potentially put us in jeopardy of losing Miss Maggie Jarrett. And as you all witnessed, having a village planner and being valuable to the goal of the village, that's how we're getting, thanks for the guys who just wanted to, to use your eye. Something I just wanted the board to understand, that you abolished your position, there's not, there's not a full-time person above that. The position was combined with one person doing it, and they have a secretary to take care of the other things, but have a full-time person to actually address the issue, economic development is not a part-time position. Not, if you, if you do a part-time, you get a part-time salary. So you have to go back and forth, you have to go out there, you have to be over all, and it's a lot of different things that involve just economic development, so we're fortunate to do that now. If you, if you take that out of your question and ask someone else, I expect it to kind of be if they got other answers other than that. I'm just bringing this to the board's attention, that it's something that I feel that is very, very important to, because we have more contrarian people saying there's a lot of, there's a lot of, we have a lot of land, we have a lot, we don't have a store. It was nothing to do with the village, the village had, it was nothing reason why that store is not there. So you can't blame the village for not having a store. That was the business decision between the owner and the side owner of the store. So right now, yes, we're trying to, but we can't go out there passively and just try to tell, okay, we'll be back with you. You have to, you have to actually be out there and counseling, phones, meetings, whatever it takes. To get people interested, that's how the answer portion came to be, yeah, being tenacious, going back and forth, trying to make it happen. So this is something that I just wanted to bring to the board, not to me. Trying to, I mean, yes, I am trying to persuade the board, because the economic development, what we can do, is very, very, well, we don't have enough, so we can attract some more. It'll be, we'll, the residents, because that's who will benefit. The board, yes, because they live here, but the residents, there's much more residents than there are for them. On that note, I would like, this was a statement.
About something you said, you said we have a potential, we are potentially going to lose the position.
Here's your name, please.
You said that we're going to potentially lose the position, are we talking about Miss Jarrett's position on the economic development?
We're going to lose Miss Jarrett, she was put here on a pilot program with the offices that we had someone full-time. Miss Jarrett goes out and gets the comprehensive plan, was brought here. In that comprehensive plan, there are a lot of ways and things that we need to get grant money for to make this happen. Miss Jarrett's job was to help us try to get the grant, but to have a person that's here in the village, that if she brought it to it, they could pursue it. If she brought this business in, or, 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 if someone that's interested, we have somebody here that could pursue it, not get back with you, because I got three other things to take care of. She does not get, and I reiterate, reiterate, she does not get paid by the village, she does not get paid by the village, she's brought here on the, on the C map. C map chose us and Canyon City to, to have this pilot program. They're funding that, we're not, but if they see that we're not dedicated for that, and we're not, and we're pulling away from it, they may just snatch us, say, okay, well, they're not that serious as we thought they were to try to get this comprehensive plan, the things that are involved in the comprehensive plan, to work. So if they see that, and quite naturally, someone said, see, that we're dismantling, or we're taking away something that would help their position, then it must not be as serious, so therefore, why should they spend their money to have her here, she could be somewhere else, that would be a place that I believe a little bit more serious about taking care of that.
So the grant that was, that we used it for, that, who can accept the grant? That's what it's for?
No.
What's the, the grant?
C map.
A C map grant, okay.
The, the C map that we got, okay. That grant that we got, so that was for the comprehensive plan. That grant that we got from C map was for the comprehensive plan. They're trying, they, the comprehensive plan, the people that were doing C map, said that they want to put a pilot program that helped the cities that were serious enough, say, okay, you got this here, you want this, we want to help you, we want to have someone here that can go and do some things and, and try to see if we can get some of these grants, but she hasn't brought things to the village. She hasn't brought ideas back to the village at the board meeting, and then she's taught several people to grant, bring things into the village. But if we don't have anybody here to do that, because she's only here once a week, or twice a week, I'm sorry, so we don't have anybody here to follow up on that, then it just falls back on dead ears, or whatever, and C map is looking at the fact that if we're abolishing a position that was very integral to making this happen, and how serious are we to try to do it, so why should they spend their rest of resources here in Saw Village, they can go to another town that's a little bit more serious?
Well, okay, this.
Are we going to go back and forth?
No, 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 I'm just trying to get some clarity on the cost, the grant that we get, it was a lot of the amount, and you were, you were saying that we're required, that we were required to have an economic person in the, and there is one to get the, the grant.
I didn't say we're required to do anything.
Okay.
No, we're not required to do anything, the, the comprehensive plan was paid for, was, was brought as a grant from C map.
Okay, so that was good.
They looked at how things were going, how we had all these meetings, I'm sure you came to some of them, and they saw that they were, that we were actually very interested, and we were dedicated. So what they said, okay, fine, if they're just dedicated, Saw Village is just dedicated to do this, we're going to start a program, we're going to have them be part of the pilot program, which is us and Canyon City. Now, if they see now that we're dismantling, that we're taking away a position that was very integral in, 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 in being part of what Miss Jarrett is doing, she was put here, not by, she was put here by, by, by the program, and said that we would like to have her here for two days, like I said before, and going off to the village. But if we don't try to do our part, or we don't, if we're not, if we're not serious enough, by us not being serious, meaning that you're going to dismantle them, why should we? Why should she go out there and do all these kinds of things that, there's no, we're not showing that we're, that we're trying to at least, at least answer a question? The next thing, the next item that I want to address for the board is the natural people. And it's kind of lengthy, so it's very, very. My veto is for the reasons, the following reasons, first of all, in order to approve an annual budget and appropriations for the corporate purposes for the village of Saw Village, Cook County, Illinois, for the period of May first, two thousand nineteen to April thirty, two thousand twenty fiscal year. The reasons for the my veto will be delivered in my message to the board today, and therefore, the board has said, voting, as voted on by the village trustees does not approve and not take advantage pursuant to the law. My veto is for, is for the following reasons, number one. The village board did not, did vote at a special meeting in Congress. All that notice to approve in order to approve an annual budget and appropriations for the corporate purposes for the village of Saw Village, Cook, Cook County, Illinois, for the May first, two thousand nineteen to May twenty, twenty twenty fiscal year. I take this measure because the board's action is a clear violation of the Open Meetings Act. The official notice was not properly posted, and did not specify which trustees call for the special meeting pursuant to Illinois law pursuant to the Saw Village Municipal Code. Therefore, I would be filing with the Illinois State Attorney Office, being noted as a violation of Open Meetings Act, and ask for a finding in the opinion regarding this matter. Number two, the vote taken by the trustees to approve this action are clearly the little who have personally voted in. They are preemptive. If you have a problem, if you have a problem with this, if you want to talk, please go out, just to kind of discuss the business here. I'm asking only one time. They are preemptive, arbitrary, and pre- 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 targeting certain employees of color and their salaries. I can. It was number two.
Oh, number two, yeah. Then you start that.
You're going to get a copy.
Oh, okay.
I connect the donor actions which are likely to result in litigation against the village board's audit and human rights violation. Number three, the vote taken by the trustees who approved this action are irresponsible, reckless, and squandered the taxpayers' money by not budgeting the program. Number four, instead of working with the mayor on ways in which both parties can compromise, those who voted for this action made it clear there is no compromise. There is no negotiation, and there is no intention of working with the mayor on a budget solution. Number five, the budget funds a position for an individual who is clearly not qualified for the position. A job description clearly stated referred five years of experience and management. The candidate that they chose had only four, a few months on the job. Additionally, the job drafted by a trustee who voted for this action states managing human resources, finance, budgets, and community relations, which clearly the individual has zero experience in doing any of these tasks. Furthermore, the individual's contract allows him to work less than full-time and have additional employment or consulting opportunities outside the village. Salary range for the village administrator that chose by the trustees who voted for this action was posted in the job description from seventy to ninety thousand dollars, depending on qualifications. The individual they chose for the job had a few months on the job, and they gave this individual top dollar instead of lower end, I'm sorry, instead of the lower end of the salary spectrum. You do not give an experienced, untested, unproven candidate lacking qualifications, tax salary, and no preparation period, and this is irresponsible to taxpayers. When it comes to. Number seven, when it comes to operational transfers in the last budget, one trustee paid notice all year long compared to that she had anesthesia. She insisted on having someone explain to her what operational transfer is being, but this year, over one point one million dollars being transferred about to balance the budget, and amazingly, nothing is saved. I veto this budget because it is beginning to force balance, budget, with amazing, nothing is saved. I veto this budget, which is beginning to balance with the following ill-defined input from the trustees who voted for it. An operational transfer of two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars from the water funds to the general fund. An operational transfer from the sewer fund of seventy-five thousand dollars to the general fund. An operational transfer of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from TIS money to the general fund. And in order to balance the budget, the trustees are squandering the Latin credit with no payment plan in place of five hundred thousand dollars to the general fund. The vote taken by the trustees who approved this action calls for a pay increase for one department head, while other employees are found by them to take the payout. I veto this action because the budget condones disparate treatment of one individual, which will likely result in litigation. The vote taken by the trustees who approved this action calls for a repayment of a hundred and two thousand dollars for the asylum grant. The grant opportunity was hunted from the previous administration and was grossly underfunded by the previous administration's budget, and the village had no additional funds to pay for the park. While we are expected to pay this money back, as mayor, I will be asking the Illinois Attorney General, our orders, and the Cook County State Attorney Office to begin an investigation as to who spent the money in the first place, and that criminal charge we brought is so warranted. These funds should be segregated in their own account. The vote taken by the trustees who approved this action called for an additional eighty thousand dollars in legal bills. I believe this is grossly under budget, and that they are on the path to blow past that within the next month or so. I veto this action, as it is grossly irresponsible for the trustees to squander the taxpayers' money. The vote taken by the trustees who approved this action to increase eighty thousand dollars for human resources and part-time assistance. This village board has taken legal action against a previous HR consultant and insisted that the new village administrator would fulfill that role to save the village money. Clearly, there, that was a lie, misdirection or misrepresentation to the people of the village of Saw Village. I veto this action for two reasons. One, we have a village administrator that the trustees who voted for him believes he could handle HR role, and two, because while they eliminated one position, that they had decided to create yet another, which is likely to cause this village a lawsuit. The village taken by the trustees, the vote taken by the trustees who approved this action calls for an additional code enforcement officer at a part-time salary of twenty-five thousand dollars. This matter has not been negotiated with the union, and this position is not needed according to the present workload of our current code enforcement officers. Management could not possibly have done a proper evaluation that was done by the prior supervisor of the current employee to determine actual need. Had they actually done so, they would have considered that there is no need at the time for an additional code enforcement officer, instead, proper training for staffers need, current staff lacks proper certifications and training. The vote taken by trustees was approved, who approved this action called for an increase for police and public work staff. These amounts were not in the recommendation for the negotiation team, and now the trustees who vote for this action have gotten into arbitrary accounts as to be included in the budget for pay raises, while other staff did not receive pay raises rather than pay reductions. These actions send a wrong signal, and are likely to cause the village lawsuits, therefore, I veto this action. Finally, as I previously stated, the vote. Ma'am, if you, if you, could you please leave, please? Could you please, I'm asking you. Because I've asked at the beginning that if you're going to continue to keep talking, I'm asking you to leave now. Finally, as I previously stated, the vote taken by the trustees who approved this action are clearly political and personally motivated. They are preemptive, opportunistic, capricious, targeting my administrative assistant who serves at the village, who serves as the village treaty of information act officer and has saved the village some thirty-five thousand dollars in expenses during her time here. My administrative assistant, assistant earns nine thousand six hundred dollars a year and has responded to every single FOIA request, some two hundred and fifty requests and not a single one appealed to the Illinois Attorney General's office where was their issue in our advisory or binding opinion against the village. Now, did the river pay an attorney a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour to respond to the FOIAs? Once again, like was done in the previous administration, there is nothing more than the political, this, this is nothing more than a political attack against me and therefore I veto this reckless action by the trustees. This veto is delivered in writing and verbally at the village board meeting this day, October 22nd. Very, very truly yours, Derek Burgess, Mayor. Next item is Village Clerk, Martha Cammerfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things that I would like to present for the village board's consumption this evening. First, I would like to draw your attention to a document that I placed at your dais, and that is on the deputy voter registrar, registrar training. That training is scheduled to take place November the fourteenth from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM, and it will take place here in the rotunda. Joining the village of Salt Village will be the League of Women Voters as well as Alpha Capa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. They will be joining us as we conduct the training. However, know that those that will be on the log for the village of Salt Village can only be trustees as well as members of our staff. We are, we will have a special type of roster because our oats are special, because we are so special. However, the specialness is greatly needed because as we continue to promote voting opportunities in the village of Salt Village to increase the nine percent that we had during our last election, we need as many people as possible to be readied to assist with voter registration, voter registration drives, and to assist with urging our residents to get out and to vote to the greatest degree possible. The other two organizations that's joining us are here to make certain that we have the required at least twenty people. So they're like our safe gap in case we do not have the twenty, but then also they are partners because you know that the League of Women Voters also, they conducted the forum for you guys, and so we just want to support them whenever we can. So what does that mean for our residents? Our residents, we still look forward to them registering, to become registeredized as well. However, when they submit their name and information to me, they will decide if they would want to go under the list with the League of Women Voters or the Alpha Capa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. But this opportunity is open to everyone and it would be wonderful to have as many of you that's out there now involved in our training so that we can just blanket Salt Village and make certain that our residents' voices are heard. It's very, very important. The other thing that I would like to share with you, and this is for everyone because we're still looking for volunteers on November the sixth at 11 o'clock. There will be a meeting for our Thanksgiving holiday festivities that's planned for November the sixteenth from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. We've talked about that before. That is intended to assist our residents who are homeless, who may be lonely, and/or entire families who may not be able to afford a Thanksgiving dinner. We will provide the entire full dinner luncheon for them. That is not coming out of the village's pockets. We have a couple of individual, a couple of organizations who's partnering with us and they're going to provide all of the food, including cooking the food. Our only responsibility is to decorate the site and to provide the paper goods that's needed to serve people on. So we do need volunteers. We need you to volunteer, we need, because we are serving the people who come here. We're not going to have them go through a line. We are going to treat them with love, honor, and dignity, and we can only do it if many of you come on board and sign on to assist with that endeavor. And, Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. I'm see village administrator, Mr. Christopher Williams.
First of all, let me say good evening, Salt Village community. I'm gonna be measuring my words tonight. Normally, I just stick to the point, but I'm gonna go back to the comments made up by budget and the mayor. I do agree with them about some of the things should be vetoed because I think there were things that I had my perspective issues regarding negotiating good faith with everyone, from the mayor to all the trustees and even to the departments. So there are some things I had concern. However, I will express my disappointment and very disheartened by the fact that some comments were made and directed to me, especially every time I felt like we're moving forward collectively. Operationally, we are working well together. We are addressing things, we are looking at things that have been brought up by both sides of the aisle out here in the community and residents. We're trying to put policies and procedures in place, but yet when we talk about political rhetoric, it was evident. And one thing that I've been doing since I came in here, and I'm very adamant about it, is my role in village administrator, for those who don't know, is to be very neutral and try to just address the policies and procedures set forth by the mayor and the board. That's what I've been doing. But to make comments like that, it was a front, it was offensive, and I don't appreciate it. So with that, I'm transitioning to what I've been working on, as I stated, some of my three-month goals. I concentrated most of my activities on operations, fiscal management, external relations, and community engagement and communications, as I stated before, and I submitted to all you all as well. Can you hear me? I did some strict review over some reoccurring invoices and existing contracts, particularly, I know one of the invoices that was held up was one of our Kane and Kenning, and I had opportunity to meet with them on October 18th, 2019, to discuss the invoice and annual reports. Can you hear me? Okay, I apologize. And forthcoming presentation, so to answer that question, I actually, we had a good discussion with Kane and Kenning. They are gonna be submitting some more reports. They are very instrumental in also helping with some of our economic analysis, which they did with some of the projects that came here before, that I don't know if that was disclosed. Then they'll be presenting in November as well as we begin to start to address the tax levies and the TIF report. So to review Kane and Kenning, they've been with the village for almost twenty-plus years. We're gonna kick somebody out. No, that's it.
Yeah, it's not a problem. It's not happening to me.
As I was saying, I also been working with the interim finance director to address some of our personal matters and policy procedures and fiscal controls as well as our annual reports. And Mr. Finch and I have been working pretty closely, particularly as well as with trustee Grant on some of our internal policies, fiscal reporting, job duties. So we are trying to address some things internally as well. Worked with the clerk for the online meeting, website, and database management through Miniquote, even though we'll be presenting that at the community as whole because there's some things that we need to address in the quote, in the presentation. I'll be at the next committee meeting. As relates to healthcare, met with our healthcare brokers in Aflac for a wellness program, also cost reductions and online management, actually today, Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019. We're trying to introduce some more online access to our employees as well as benefits summaries, so then they understand how much they actually put into their employee, into their contribution for medical benefits combined with the employee, employer. But then also introducing a wellness program, hopefully can also reduce some of our premiums over the long haul. Also been working with the police as well as the attorneys for our contracts, which we'll talk about more in executive session. And then also had the pleasure of working with our economic community development director, combined also with the clerk, to meet, discuss, and design, implement a beautification program, better data management, and then also rebranding the village for economic growth. With that said, I'm done.
Village Attorney, Attorney Mike McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up from the meeting, last regular board meeting. Trustee Brewer has some questions about our legal bills, which I talked to her about. Just because there's always rumblings about legal bills, I would ask if anyone's got any questions about any of our entries or time entries, anyone on the board or in the departments, feel free to reach out. I'll go through it with you anytime. That's all.
Village Engineer, Mr. Jim Thar.
Thank you, Mayor. First Robinson has made good progress on the manhole inspections for MWRD's infiltration and inflow control program. Last week, we inspected about three hundred manholes. We expect to finish the initial field inspections this week. Second, we have finalized a list of priority projects for the TIF bond improvements. These projects include road repairs in the logistics center, road repairs in the Sock Point Industrial Park, intersection improvements at Sock Point Drive and Sock Trail, water main replacement from I-394 to Joshua Drive, and interior coating removal and replacement for the west elevated tank. We have submitted proposed engineering agreements to the village for consideration. Once authorized, we will start design engineering immediately with the goal of bidding the projects this coming spring for summer construction. And that concludes my report. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Treasury Report, Mr. Anthony Finch.
So if you like, I could show up for the November 5th meeting and talk about those projects for the TIF bond improvements in detail. So it's up to you whether you want me to attend. I could certainly attend that night.
Yes, so we can go over that because we had to abbreviate a lot of those things. And you did give us, so yes, we can go over that. What we can expect, we can put it on the agenda, what we can expect, what we're gonna be looking for for bids to do those projects over the next year. Thank you. Again, President.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Board. In front of you guys, you have the cash balance as of this evening, October 22nd. Currently, in the corporate account, we have one hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. The reserve is eight hundred thousand. In our special account, we have one hundred and two thousand six hundred and nine. In the water store, we have one million seven ninety thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. In the water store, E-PAD account, three hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. In the cell tower account, we have three hundred and two dollars. We still have the line of credit of five hundred thousand dollars for a total of two million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and two dollars of dollar cash to be used. Before I go further to my restricted funds, in about two weeks, we do have two bond payments that I may do, so I just want to make you guys aware of that. I'm gonna spread it out over the two council meetings because I wanted not, again, like I said before, not touch the line of credit until we absolutely have to need it. So I'm just gonna stretch it out for cash flow purposes. Regarding restricted funds, in the C N account, we have forty-two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. In the D A account, we have one hundred and three thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. In the Salt Village housing account, we have one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. In the TIF account, we have six hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. In the toll account, we have thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. In the home and money laundry account, we have six thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. In the spending drug account, we have twenty-four thousand one hundred and nine dollars. In the spending for money laundry account, we have eight hundred and ninety dollars. And then in the M F T, we have three hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars for a total of restricted funds, one million one hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. In addition, I would like the board and the mayor to know, we are about seventy percent caught up on the bankrupt rates for fiscal year nineteen. We are also in the process of getting ready to prep for the audit, so that's something that's going to be ongoing. In addition, I will be sending out some suggested emails to the trustees regarding some accounts that I think have been closed that have been dormant for the last several years, but have been charged monthly fees. So that concludes my Treasury Report.
Thank you. Do you have anything? The next one will be finance administration. Do you have some?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, again. In front of you guys, you guys have the accounts payable and payroll dispersory report. Payroll as of October 11th, 2018 was a hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. This evening, you'll be asked to approve accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and ten dollars and eighty, three hundred, three hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a total dispersory over the two-week period to be four hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. That concludes my finance report.
Okay, Fire Department, Captain Dennis Sedgwick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Department responded to twenty-nine calls for service from September 20th through October 3rd. We had no major incidents or problems. As the temperatures are getting colder, we'd like to remind everyone to have your furnaces cleaned and checked. Also make sure your smoke alarms and CO alarms are in good working order. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police Department Chief, Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. We'd also like to remind you, as the temperature changes, to increase your distances between your, the vehicle in front of you. You have to remember that overnight sometimes it dips a little freezing, you have black ice out. You also have leaves in other degree on the world that make it much slicker. So this time of year, we try and remind residents to increase the distance and when you're trying to break into the vehicle in front of you. Our calls for service between the period of October 9th through October 22nd, the police department, we responded to four hundred and sixty calls for service. During that same time period, we had over twenty arrests. Mr. Mayor, Board, that concludes my report.
Okay, Emergency Management Agency, I have his report here. Any reasons follows. Thank you, Mayor, Madam clerk, and Board of Trustees. EMA responded to four calls for service, two auto accidents, of which one was AOA to Stater, one smoked investigation, one exposed electrical wires. Unfortunately, due to the scheduling conflicts, EMA will, were unable to assist with the truck and tree house to walk from Rickover to, to the village, October 26th, 2019. EMA will be assisting our police department as Halloween patrolling the village streets. Just a safety reminder, with Halloween coming up, please extra- Just a safety reminder, with Halloween coming up, please, extra, please, you, no, just the, extra help or drive, watch out for, for the little trick-or-treaters. Our final note with Halloween, if you see a blue pumpkin carried by a trick-or-treater, keep in mind that blue pumpkin represents autism awareness. Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk and Board of Trustees. This will conclude my report as submitted by Mr. Alabama. Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Lo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff completed repair at 22243 Merrill. To make a permanent repair, we had to remove a tree. Three sticks of water main were replaced and two services lines were affected. All residents received a boil order, and the boil order will be lifted Thursday. All affected residents will be notified. A job that we have ongoing, we had an emergency water main break about a week and a half ago. This was at 2228 Yates Avenue. During this event, we had to put multiple clamps on the main to stop the water from leaking, and we actually got to the point where we get to the end of the pipe and the bell was cracked. So we have authorization to replace some main at that location. There's been several water main breaks in this area, so we're going to be doing three sticks of water main. We have to remove three trees in order to do this. This will affect three services, three house services that will be replaced. And because we're so close to it, we have a broken fire engine at this location, so we will be replacing the fire engine. At this point, a boil order will be placed in place. All residents that are affected will receive it, and once lifted, they will receive the lift. Staff has been out repairing some locations of old digs in the street. These are locations that the road has already been removed during the water main break. 22406 Strasburg was the first one. We have three more to work on, 22486 Yates, that's a storm sewer and a street repair. 22472, the street repair. And 22544 Jeffrey, this is a street repair. Staff has also been out with requests of some dangerous trees, some hazardous trees, inclusive of the jobs that we're working on and the trees that we had to remove for the hazards. There were 20 trees removed. This also includes the six that were removed during the windstorm recently here. This also, all these jobs took about two weeks to do, and the stumps are still pending, but we will back, be back at a later date. During the windstorm on 10/21, we did remove six trees that came down, five of which were good trees, one which was a dead tree. These stumps are pending at this time, and just let everybody know that during a storm event like we had, which was just windstorm and very minimal rain, we did have a lot of branches down around town. So residents who have branches down on their property, they have till Friday to put them out, actually they have till Sunday to put them out to be picked up for next week, but once we pass by, we will not come back, so you have a little bit of time to get them out. Storm sewers on 10/21 were cleaned. Residents should refrain from blowing debris in the roadway. The leaf program will not begin until the second week in November, which we will post the exact dates as we get closer. So when you have your lawns right now, your final cut for your season or close to the final cut, please do not cut the debris into the roadway up until the time, which is usually a week before the leaf program. That'll be the first week in November. You can start placing your leaves in the curb line. Just leave a little space between the curb and the street so water can pass by. There was a resident asking about some streetlights. My last report, I had reported some streetlight problems we had. We have some poles that were knocked down during accidents, two of which are in the location that we described. The one is at 21711 Jeffrey Avenue. That is the corner of 217th and Jeffrey. That is a pole missing. The device that we had made, we have it now, so we're going to be able to pull these poles up a lot easier. The other one is 1609 217 Place. There's also an accident where the pole is missing that's just down the street. And the last one is 3021 223rd Street. So we'll be working on those as we get an opportunity here. We have the emergency right now with the water main replacement, so that'll be pushed off for a few days. Last report, I reported a fire engine we started working on at 2550 Sock Trail. All those parts are in. We will be working on in the next few weeks once we get caught up on some of the other jobs. Staff started, the completion, started and completed the north side shut-off list. All seemed to go well. The Department of Public Works has received equipment ordered recently a while back, approved by the board and the mayor. This was a street grinder, a landscape tiller, and a post hole digger. Today, we've used the bucket and we've used the post hole digger to set some holes. Our next job will be the street grinder. We will start a location at Public Works Yard at our entranceway to improve the bridge area at this point for the winter, but that'll be our first test area. And then finally, the work on the West Water Tower, which started on 10/16. This is the riser pipe replacement. The pipe is installed. We started to fill. We had a sample on 10/21, which we received the bolts back today, that the samples came back all good. So we will complete the filling of the water tower and then place it back online. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Community and Economic Development Interim Director, Ms. Tanya McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I've been the interim Community and Economic Development Director, I've worked very closely with Maggie Jar on different initiatives, and for my report tonight, I'm going to defer to Maggie.
Thank you, Tanya. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Just okay. Good evening. Tonight, as Tanya mentioned, I'll be providing a status update on my activities as your village planner. And I wanted to start with a quick refresher, that earlier this year, the village was selected to participate in CMAP's new embedded staff planner program. And I'll start first to explain that CMAP is the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, which is our regional planning agency serving 284 municipalities in the northeastern Illinois region. And we provide a lot of different types of technical assistance, mostly related to land use and transportation planning. We were the group that granted the village the comprehensive plan project that was completed last year. And so this is a new pilot program that places CMAP staff in communities to serve as part-time staff planners for up to a two-year period. And the goal of the program is to strengthen the ability of the participating municipalities to set and achieve their local community goals, and also in the process, help our agency better understand how to assess and build local capacity here in northeastern Illinois. Ultimately, we'll be developing a recommendation for a permanent program where we can serve capacity-constrained communities throughout our entire region. So Sock Village is one of six communities that's included in this pilot. I just wanted to do a little bit of background before I dive in. We're about seven months into the program at this point, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank village officials and staff for welcoming me to Village Hall last March, and for inviting me to sit in on your meetings, to talk with you one-on-one. That's really helped me get to know the community and to better understand the strengths, challenges, and opportunities here in Sock Village. So thank you all. Those conversations, among with other research, have really helped to shape the work plan that was included in your packets for this evening's meeting. I developed this work plan as a document that will help guide the activities that I'll undertake on behalf of the village. And really, this is my plan for how to direct resources from CMAP and other partners back to this community. Tonight, I wanted to brief you on each of the activities that's included in this work plan, but overall, as a general statement, to say that these are activities that seek to build on your community's successes, promote long-range strategic planning, and also achieve local and regional objectives. So there are two parts to the work plan. The first one highlights my ongoing activities. Included in that category, I'm serving as a staff liaison for several grant, technical assistance projects that are currently underway. That means I'm the staff contact for our ongoing Invest in Cook grants, also a village-wide pavement management study, and an MWRD-led stormwater master planning project, just to name a few. Also included in this category of ongoing activities, you know, I'm not always here at Village Hall. I'm out in the region representing Sock Village at regional and partner meetings, making sure that we've got a seat at the table, and then bringing back new ideas and opportunities as they arise. The second section of the work plan highlights eight different special activities, and these are more targeted projects that are going to help support the village's priorities and also allow me to build in some capacity-building activities as we go. So I'll walk through them one by one now to provide that overview. The first is to create an implementation strategy for the multi-use path project along Sock Trail and 223rd Street. Last week, our Cook County Commissioner came and congratulated us on receiving Invest in Cook funding for the preliminary engineering, and that's definitely something to be proud of. So as part of this activity, I'll be looking ahead to identify other funding sources that could be used for future phases of work, and also importantly, looking at strategies to ensure that the village has the staff capacity and understands the needs on the staffing side to actually shepherd the project through. Because it's one thing to procure the funds, but it's just as important, as important to have a staff person who's there to be the day-to-day contact, who can actually move it forward. Because if you don't have that, that grant's not doing a lot of good for the community. So I want to be developing some strategies to make sure that, once I'm gone, after this two-year period is up, that the capacity is left here with our existing staff to carry things forward. Under Action Two, I'm going to be working closely with our South Council and also some transportation partners to explore next steps to connect to regional greenways and trails. And that could include a continuation of Old Plank Road Trail extending from Chicago Heights through to the Indiana border. The next two activities, numbers two and, excuse me, numbers three and four in your packets, are really meant to set the village up for development of a capital improvement program, or a CIP. And that's a document that defines capital projects and equipment purchases, provides a planning schedule, and identifies options for financing that plan. The first step in this work plan to get us there will be really revolving around data collection on various capital facilities and equipment, looking at roadway, sidewalks, stormwater and wastewater infrastructure, many other categories. A water loss audit will also be conducted as part of this process. We are currently working with Metropolitan Planning Council to get some dedicated technical assistance to conduct this audit through their Drinking Water 123 Academy. The next action in the work plan is to provide the village board with a customized training focused on an important local issue. This is a training that I would help coordinate and facilitate to bring in some topical expertise, build the expertise of our board, and then also encourage some productive discussion on an important local issue. And it's not defined yet. It could be water planning and management. It could also be something else that's timely, like an introduction to Rebuild Illinois, the new capital bill from the state. What is it? How does it impact Sock Village? And what are the next steps? And so I welcome feedback from the board on what sort of training topics you'd like to see in the future as well. So please do contact me with your ideas in the next couple of weeks if you can. Under Action Six, I'll be engaging village officials and staff to better understand any issues with the existing zoning ordinance, assessing the ordinance for opportunities to support community goals, particularly in the comprehensive plan, and providing recommendations on potential updates to the existing land use regulations and administrative processes. Next, to address vacant property challenges, there's a few different things I'll be initiating in the near term. First is to digitize a recent survey of vacant and abandoned buildings, and then helping the staff here analyze those results. I'll also be engaging with the South Suburban Land Bank to consider opportunities for collaboration. And finally, coordinating with Homes for a Changing Region Group, which will be bringing a technical assistance panel to the village to help us strategize really the best approach for targeting housing stabilization within the village. And lastly, the final action item here is to leverage existing partnerships to support economic development efforts. This is an activity that will focus on working with our existing partners, particularly with the county, to develop strategies in that attracting development projects that will drive economic growth, but also create high-wage jobs and facilitate improved quality of life for residents. These are all activities that we'll be running concurrently, initiating them over the next six months. My hope is to bring you a new work plan in six months that outlines new initiatives and activities, but building on the work that we'll be conducting over the next six months. So I'm viewing these special projects as really foundational to unlock the village's ability to move forward with capital improvement program, to go for that plan that we know is set up to support our goals. So these are all activities meant to be part of a sequence. This is our first step. And in closing, I just want to say that I'm really working closely with staff and officials to carry out this work, and that I'd like to plan on coming back to the board on a regular basis to provide you with updates on the size of the building.
All right. Your reports, the trustees, the standing committees and committees, Public Safety Committee, Mr. Gary Bell.
I'm going to err on the side of the oxen, and I'm going to go with no report. No report.
Public Service Committee, trustee Bernice Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last couple of weeks, we have been trying to track down the contracts for certain vendors. However, we are reviewing the Kane McKinnney contract, which is gonna, they're gonna come out on November 1st and do a presentation on the overview of the, huh?
November what?
First. I thought you said, yeah, first. I got the first.
The first is a Friday.
It's a first Friday. Well, the fifth, whatever Tuesday is. Is that the fifth? Okay. November 5th, then we're gonna do an overview of the fund. Kane McKinnney gonna come out and do a presentation about what's been going on with the TIPS for the last couple of years, because as you know, we haven't had any feedback from them since 2017. And also, we're gonna take a look at the Laurel contract, which we can't seem to get a copy of, so we want to take a look at that. Even though I know the contract for Laurel is over with, it should be ended by now, but we'd like to take a look at it because if they come back, he, I think they need to be, their contract needs to be looked at again. So, and in essence, what we're gonna do is try to look at a lot of these contracts that's been here a while, and take a look at overview of, you know, changing, whatever needs to be done, extending, whatever they need to be done, just, just looking at the contracts and making sure they're still, you know, in good, in good stead with the village. That's the end of my report.
Budget and Finance, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the Budget and Finance Committee, we have not met in quite some time because, as you know, we just passed the budget last week, and it was vetoed, so we're still operating on last year's budget. However, once that budget is passed, I do plan to work with the Finance Director and the village administrators, trying to get some updated reports, as we are, will be probably close to seven months done of the fiscal year. And then that's the end of that comment. And then I guess a comment on the budget. Last week, there were numerous errors, which I would call, in the budget that we kind of recognized and acknowledged, but we still passed it anyway. I would hope that sometime this week, that we go back, sit with the Finance Director and kind of correct those things, because it just doesn't make sense to pass a budget that we know is wrong, we pass it anyway. And that's all that I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Housing and Governmental Relations, trustee Sherri Zess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Committee will meet tomorrow night at 7:00. We will be reviewing the two ordinances for home sale inspections and rental inspections. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Ordinance Review Committee, trustee Linda Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ordinance Review Committee will meet on November 4th at 6:00 PM, which is on a Monday here at the Village Hall. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Events Committee, trustee Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are numerous papers back on the tables back there, and there may be more than one table, but the first one is the trunk retreat for this Saturday. We will start at Rickover Junior High at 11:30 for the costume walk, and we will walk towards the community center where we will have the trunk retreat. Everyone is invited, invited to attend, fill their trunk for the kids, and come inside and volunteer for some activities with the kids. There will be prizes for best costume for both kids and adults, refreshments and crafts. And if you'd like to participate in any way, we do have three sign-up sheets in the back. And if you don't, if you don't have time to sign up today, you can always email me at DWilliams@SockVillage.org. The way that you can contribute to this event is you can There will be prizes for best costume for both kids and adults, refreshments and crafts. And if you'd like to participate in any way, we do have three sign-up sheets in the back. And if you don't, if you don't have time to sign up today, you can always email me at DWilliams@SaukVillage.org. The way that you can contribute to this event is you can contribute candy, or financially, at the front desk of the Village Hall. They'll make sure that the candy is purchased for the children. Or you can volunteer, because there are several places that you can volunteer. So if you'd like to volunteer at this event, you can sign up tonight, or email me. Or you can come and fill your trunk. So I would kind of like to have an idea of how many trunks we're gonna have, so if you can call me in advance, or just show up, whatever's your preference. We also have the What's Happening in Sauk Village, that has several safe Halloween events for the children. So there's more than just the trunk or treat this weekend. We also have the Conneve Public Library is having their trunk or treat and spooky scavenger hunt at 3:30 on October 30th. We have trick or treat hours from 3:00 to 7:00 PM on October 31st, which is Halloween. We have a harvest party and trunk or treat at 6:00 PM at Crossroads Church at 23001 South Torrance Avenue on the 31st. And also, the Jewel Dyer and Dyer is having trunk or treat, or actually, I think they call it trick or treat, from 12:00 to 4:00 on Halloween. So there's a lot of things that are going on, just to give you an idea of where you can, where you can go to get some positive information. We are having the Public Events Committee meeting tomorrow at 5:00, either here in the retunda or one of the conference rooms, so that we can discuss the last-minute events. And we also have, I beg your pardon, first of all, let me correct, the Dyer Jewel is Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00. Their trick or treat. We have the 2019 Public Events Committee calendar also on the back, and those events run through the rest of the year, so it not only includes what's happening in October, but it also includes the November 9th Veterans Thanksgiving Dinner, the early Thanksgiving Dinner for vets. It's on November 9th. That is being sponsored by the Sauk Village Public Events Committee and the Southland Voice. And then we have the Mayor's Annual Veteran Celebration on November 11th. And then we have the 16th, the Day of Thanksgiving, that the village clerk will be organizing. And then we have a Holiday Craft and Vendor Fair on November 23rd. And also in December, we have no board meeting on the 3rd of December, but we do have Christmas tree lighting on the 7th, and that's the first Saturday in December. The Public Events Committee will be doing a bake sale and a fundraiser on December 22nd, just before the holidays, so if you want to pick up some holiday goodies, it's a fundraiser actually, for the Public Events Committee. So in saying that, what I'd like to encourage is some good clean fun and some good ways of coming together as a community, because it seems like there's so much hostility and so much disagreement, that what I would like to do as the Public Events Committee is to try to circumvent some of that. And part of the problem that I think is happening is total lack of communication. And maybe you're not seeing it, but you're, you're, you're a result of it. I had a very good conversation with the mayor yesterday regarding the upcoming events that I was attempting to plan, but what ended up happening was I left with more questions than I had answers. Because after I left, I realized, why is it because I asked to see a contract for an event that's being held the day of the trunk or treat in a building that's always been used for trunk or treat? Why was I not able to see the contract? It's a very simple question, a question that any trustee should be able to ask, but rather than be able to see the contract, I was just told, well, it's being rented. Okay, so you've agreed to use the gym. Now, in using the gym, we have to get public works to come out, lay types, bring in tables, bring in chairs. That's an additional cost to the village. And we're always talking about how the trustees are costing the village money, so this is going to cost the village money, but the thing is, it's an event that's held at the same time, at the same place, every year. So we're trying to be consistent. So when I discussed the Christmas tree lighting with the mayor, that is normally held on December 7th, I said, unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I have a family event that day. I personally cannot do the Christmas tree lighting. I will, however, do it on December 14th, if you'd like to move the event, to which he said, no, that's always held at that day, at that time, at that place. So it's kind of confused why it works in one hand, but it doesn't work in the other. So I am not able to do the Christmas tree lighting event. I was willing to do it on 14th. I told the mayor, then we need to find somebody else to do that event, to which he said he doesn't know who's gonna do that then. So I'm opening it up to the board. I said, I've, I've made this offer before. When I took on the Public Events Committee, I really wanted the Public Relations Committee. I was given the Public Events Committee, and the mayor said, well, you could try to find other board members to take on those events. I think I'm hearing the clerk on the side here saying she would be doing, is that what you're saying, Madam Clerk? I wasn't sure. But anyway, anybody can take on that event. I would have loved to have taken on that event, but because it's the same time, same place, every year, my family obligation won't allow me to do that. So another thing I wanted to point out, I got a lot of phone calls that there's another slot place opening up next to Tony's. Kind of concerns me, because I didn't know anything about it. I went to a community prayer this weekend, and one of the things that the pastor said to me that was very notable is that the pastor came from a place in Chicago where there was more liquor stores than there were churches, and she's glad to be in a community where there's more churches than there are liquor stores. Well, I don't know if she's looked around lately, but I think we might have surpassed that halfway mark. Matter of fact, I think that our liquor stores have now, if you include the slot places, because you can't have slot places unless you have alcohol, I think our alcohol, the places where we can buy alcohol, has now exceeded the amount of active churches in the village, which is very discouraging. And I don't know how this happened. I would love to see how many liquor licenses have been added since 2017. I would like to see how many gaming licenses have been added since 2017, because what I don't see is an influx of children's programs. I see a community center that's not open on a daily basis. I see a part-time parks and recreation position that's been open for, I would say, almost two years, and we used to have it open from 12, I mean, I'm sorry, in the evening, from 4:00 to 8:00, so the kids had somewhere to go. What I don't see is video gaming for the children, instead of video gaming for the adults. I don't see arcade for the children. I don't see a bowling alley. I don't see something for the kids to do, but we're popping up with adult gaming everywhere, every which way we go. One of the papers at the back of the table is the Cedar Program. The Cedar Program is in its new round, and it's very important that you pick up a flyer, because they do help you with your weatherization. That can include anything from a furnace, to air conditioning, to a hot water heater, to attic wall insulation, and you don't have to have low income to qualify. So many people qualify and don't realize that they qualify. But most importantly, in the first round, seniors take priority. So I think it's important that everybody take a flyer from back there, just to see if you do qualify. And as far as the budget is concerned, we said when we passed the budget that there was some amendments that were going to need to be made. The budget has been amended at least nine times. The budget needed to pass. The budget is not a one-time you pass it, that's the final result. Budget amendments are made all throughout the year. And I guarantee you, since we have three weeks before we can override the veto, that there will be some budget amendments presented very quickly at that time. But the one thing, there's a couple of things I wanted to point out, because I'm not prepared to answer the mayor's veto right now, because to be perfectly honest with you, when we do answer it as a board, you're gonna see that a lot of the things that were stated are incorrect, and I take offense at a lot of what was said, and I want to have the facts and figures in front of me before I address that, but I do want to, I have to point out a couple of things that were stated, because it's very misleading, and when you make the statements, statements that are misleading, that's what causes the problems. So it was stated that we, that there were raises given to someone other than union raises. Not true. To my knowledge, there hasn't been one raise other than the union negotiations, which we have to do. And it was, I just also want you to know that there was not an additional code person added in this budget, and I want you also to know that there was a part-time public works employee cut in this budget, and there was also an open position for public works cut from this budget. So there's a lot of cuts that you're not hearing about that happened in this budget, because we got faced with a lot of expenses, unnecessary, unexpected expenses, that we needed as a board to account for. And we also had the anticipated part-time front desk assistant, which the board was looking for, was also eliminated. So it was stated that the budget passed, and there will be some amendments. We understand that. Interim Finance Director Finch has stated that the budget, the actual figures, should be in by the next committee meeting. Since there's no meeting next week, that will be November 5th. I suggest that if everybody wants to know exactly where we stand with the finances, and where the budget may or may not be amended, that November 5th will be a very good meeting for you to attend, because at that time, we'll already know where we are with the budget before it's even passed. By the time we pass the budget, we will be into the sixth month of a 12-month budget. So that was very clear, I'd like to make that statement. But as far as the Economic Development Director, as, as a trustee, I think one of the main things, what I say about communication, one of the main things that I think is vitally important, is that we don't get surprised by what's happening with the staff, or with the residents. We need to be informed. And what happened with that particular position was, three months ago, the Economic Development Director resigned after charges were about to be filed against him. Rather than defend himself against the charges, he resigned with little notice. The very next business day, the part-time assistant to the Economic Development Director was placed in the position at a salary increase of $48,000. The board was never informed of the decision by the mayor to fill that position immediately. Not, let's talk to the board. We never were able to discuss the qualifications of the individual. We never were able to discuss that we still need that, if that position moving forward. So the interim position was never approved by the board. The board approved spending. So what I'm saying to you is, after three months, we finally have some communication by the mayor, why that position is so vitally important, and how it could affect a grant that we have. So it's never been brought to my attention before. I've never been told exactly what qualifications this young lady may have. I know that at working with her, she's, she's doing a great job at what she's doing, but how do you place somebody from one position to another and not consult your board? That's the lack of communication. And it's the lack of communication that causes problems, not personal and political agendas. We do not speak as a board together. The mayor unilaterally hires and fires people without talking to his board. And what we're saying is, we want to work with you, Mr. Mayor, not against you. So why can't you work with us when you're, why can't you also control the audience when we're trying to speak, Mr. Mayor? It's a one-sided deal. It's a one-sided
Point of order!
Furniture, furniture, Diane.
So
You're just playing with me.
Thank you. Thank you. So in saying that, I'd like to close my report. Yes, sir.
Why, every week? Every week? Why? Why do you have to do this every week? Sound like kids in here. This is sound like a kindergarten, back and forth, we argue amongst one another. We're trying to conduct business. Blurring out is disrespectful. That's why I stopped it. But if you want to continue to keep doing that, we'll just call for a recess, and we'll be here long. But to keep doing this doesn't, doesn't accomplish anything. To interrupt somebody when they're talking, that's on either side. It's a shame, as I said before, it's a shame that we sit here divided like this, living in the same community, might be neighbors to each other. As I said last week, we all bleed the same color. So, so someone thinking they're better than, or whatever the case may be, we have to conduct business here. Now, public comment? If you keep doing it, it'll be an optional thing, because this really have to, have to happen at the, at the time. You can also, we can also stay here afterwards and answer your comments and your questions after the meeting, after the business has been taken care of. But we continue to go back and forth, point fingers, being disrespectful, then we just won't hear from the audience until that's the meeting's over with.
Thank you. I agree with everything the mayor just said. This is not a one-sided thing, but we both need to, we need to reprimand both sides equally, and both sides equally need to understand that we have a very important job up here to do, and it's very difficult to conduct business when there's the hemming and hawing and the jawing in the audience. We can't hear up here, just like you have sometimes a problem hearing us, and you tell us to use the mic. You don't know how your voice is carried when we're up here trying to think, to conduct business. So I'm saying this to everyone, if you want us to do our job, please, as the mayor said, it's not you, or me, or you, or you, it's everybody. Please let's be respectful during the meeting. So in saying that, there's another thing I'd like to continue to add with the Economic Development Director. So in view of the fact of the lack of communication and what the communication that we just had, I will be asking to table the motion on 11C for further investigation, to see just how impactful the position is to the grant that we're about to do. I am thankful to get this information. Three months late, whatever. I'm thankful to get this information, because now I can make an intelligent decision as a trustee, instead of taking a decision that I didn't have any information on. So in saying that, Mr. Mayor, I will make that motion at the appropriate time. So thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor, trustee Williams, may I ask that you amend the calendar? Because you omitted one very, 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 very important event in my world, and that is on December the 21st for the Christmas holiday cheer, that's our food basket giveaway and our luncheon. You got it right. Okay?
Oh, I'd be happy to amend it, but I don't know if you ever sent me that information.
I did, all in one. Email. You got it. You just overlooked it. But yeah, that is detriment, that's detrimental, because it involves all of our churches, our schools, our departments, all of you, and so, we need you guys to get in action for the 21st.
Definitely make that change. I'm sorry that it's omitted. It was not intentional. And again, any trustees, or board members, or staff members that have events, please let me know as soon as possible, because this, this calendar is updated off. But I will make that amendment, make that change. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to write two wrong things that were mentioned, and it's not going back and forth with debate. The first one was the board, for an interim position, it's put in there temporary, that's why it's interim, because it's not approved from the board to fill a position until the board has the actual time to vote on that particular position. That's why it's called interim. They're filling the position until such time the board can replace that particular position. And the second one, as far as economic development left before, you all did everything but threaten this man's house to
That's unnecessary here.
I am not, I said it was gonna be open for discussion.
You said it was
I said it would not, trustee, I said it
Well, I thought we weren't supposed to comment at each other's court.
Trustee, I said it would not be open for discussion.
Okay.
I was making a statement. And the economic development director, it was basically sue him or whatever, that person and human resources. So they left amid the fact they had to go back and forth with litigation, so, or be able to stay here without being thrown out, or whatever the case may be. So this person resigned and left because, like I stated before, it was, it was pressure. Next report is
I'm just making my money.
I'd like to know where we're able to comment at each other's court.
The question, I'm sorry, the, as I stated before, how can we expect the, the audience to respect what we're saying if we don't respect each other?
Is that a question to me, because I'd like to answer that?
I'm asking the board, how can we expect the audience to respect us if we're back and forth here at this time?
If that's a question, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that.
Comment.
You said we don't
It's not a question. It's a comment.
Can we please move on, Mr. Agenda?
Reports of committees, I try to
Okay.
Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council chairman Emmett Clama.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, our
I'm sorry, our Coleman instead of Emmett Clama.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, to the, to the mayor, to the board. The Senior Advisory Council report for this Thursday, October 22nd is as follows. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is Thursday, November the 14th at 5:00 PM. All are welcome. A day at the casino has been scheduled for next Wednesday, October 30th, from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. The cost is $35 per person. Please contact Carol Coleman for more information at 773-426-0176. Come join us, or come join our seniors for our senior luncheon this Thursday, October 24th, from 12 noon until 2:00 PM. There is, there is no cost, but you must be 50 and over to participate. To RSVP, contact Deborah O'Conne at 708-710-4564. Please, or please see flyers that are posted around the Village Hall. Also, come out and join our seniors for breakfast, bingo, Also, come out and join our seniors for breakfast bingo every second and fourth Friday, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 noon. And, and this fourth Friday, October 25th, we have a special treat for our seniors. Oak Street Health will be there immediately following bingo, to do a presentation, and will be providing breakfast. Please come out and join us. Also, Medicare season is upon us. Representatives from Humana, United Healthcare, SIG, and Cigna will be doing seminars every Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday here in the senior center. Watch for flyers posted around the building for the exact time. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. New business? I'm going to attend a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable and disbursements for the amount of $442,480 and $72,000.
So moved. Second.
It's moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Ty. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion carrying. I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution to adopt the 2019 Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So moved.
It's moved by trustee Ty, second by trustee Bell. Any questions?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carrying. Item number C, motion to approve an ordinance rescinding ordinance 17-009, an ordinance establishing the position of Economic Development Director, and abolishing that position of Economic Development Director.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we table item 11C until we're able to do additional research.
It's moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Brewer, to table item C for the position of Economic Development Director. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yep.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carrying. Item D, executive session, I'll accept the motion to go into executive session for pending litigation, and a frank personnel matter. So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam Clerk, it's all over.
Trustee Brewer, trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer, yes. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carrying.